Yeah, Michelle, it's not coming up live just yet. Did you go ahead and turn it on? Okay, let's, I'm looking at, is there anyone getting the live link?
Well, it is nine o'clock. Good morning. Welcome to the June seventeenth Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing by for a moment of silence. We will be led this morning by Supervisor Worthley.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda today is Board of Supervisor Matters, and we'll start with Supervisor Innes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we were out at the Suttons' new kiddies park that they built, and they had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for it. And it was great to see a big turnout out there. We probably had, I'd say, two or three hundred people. All showed up, and of course, a lot of the people there were the people from the community that had worked on the park and helped get it all, the trees planted, and get the systems all in. They're getting a new water system for the people to come fill their water containers up. So, great, great little jewel for that community. And of course, they're going to continue to improve it. They're probably going to eventually, down the road, build some soccer fields and maybe some basketball courts out there. So, great for that community. They are a big part of it. They're one of the big anchors for that community. They employ well over two hundred people, so it was great to be out there. Saturday night, we had the big flag ceremony in Porterville there at Save Mart, which was started by Howard Smith years ago at Smith Market. And then, when Save Mart came in and bought them out, they continued the, the flag day. And it's always a great deal to see all the people out. And the big flag, I mean, it's a big one. It has to be, I'm going to say, twenty by forty, big, big flag. And bring it down and put a fresh one up. Every year's great. And Judge Glade Roper was our speaker that night, so it was good to see Glade. Wednesday, I'll be having a gang summit meeting in Porterville, Porterville Police Department, at noon. Thursday, we'll have the Leadership Porterville Class over here for our yearly meeting. And we'll have different departments talking. I know that Mike Washington and Eric Coyne are going to be one of the, one of the topics on EDC, Economic Development, and also on tourism and filming. So, that's, that's always something that they like. And then, of course, we always have the, the budget, always have Gene come in and talk to the, to the people about the budget and how that works, and how the dollars split up with the county and the schools and everybody. So, looking forward to that. And then, I guess that's about it for me this week. Thank you.
Vice Rasheedah.
Last week, I traveled to Grass Valley, Nevada City for a meeting of the Rural County Supervisors. And we discussed, of course, water. And one of the main topics was the Water of the USA, which the EPA is trying to take control of all water in the United States. And that means if you have standing water on your property, if you're a farmer or a cattlemen, they want control over your land use. And we have a couple farmers in California, they're being sued right now, or suing the EPA. They went, they bought a piece of property, they started to farm it again, and they grew wheat. Well, the US, the EPA came in and said they couldn't grow wheat because it was critical habitat under the waters of the United States. But then, when they showed it had a wheat allotment, that means it had a historical base for wheat growing on that property, the EPA kind of backed off. But they're putting a lot of this, a lot of the goals that they have in mind of controlling the water in the United States, they're putting it in place now. They're not waiting for legislation. So, that's a very important issue for, for us. And if you have a stockwater pond on your property, you'll be subject under the US Waters Act on land use on your property. Something that was interesting, we have thirty-four counties that belong to the Rural County Supervisor Association. Twelve of the thirty-four lost population last, last year, which is a surprising trend for the mountain counties because a lot of people have been going to the mountain counties to escape the, the urban areas. Last week, last Monday, we also had a meeting here in Visalia with state officials to talk about the water drought, the drought that we're having and the impact upon our residents in Tulare County. And in that meeting, we had a group of people show up from Campbell Creek. Campbell Creek is a small, unincorporated community on the north edge of Farmersville. It's where the big church is with the big steeple on Farmersville Boulevard. I think they were kind of surprised that these people showed up to the meeting. But there's about a hundred residents in that community, and over twelve of them, their wells are dry. And they have been dry for several weeks. So, I guess we made an impression upon the, the state agencies. So, last night, there was a special meeting of the Farmersville City Council, which approved applying for a bond to connect those homes to Farmersville Water. Because the Farmersville Main Line, one of the main lines, run right, right next to this group of homes. So, it looks promising that we may be able to get grant money to hook these people up. And so, the council, City Council, agreed to be the lead agency and file for that bond, I mean, for the, file for the grant. And of course, when you hook them up, they'll be on water meters, which the rest of the city of Farmersville is converting to right now. And one of the issues that came up with those who had good domestic wells at this time, is they could use the water to irrigate their landscape. And some of those parcels are rather large, so they could irrigate some of the crops they may have or some livestock they may have. And we didn't think that was a, a problem. And that's all I have today.
Vice Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, in the, for full disclosure, if people think I've been in a barroom brawl, I wanted to let you know I actually had a little skin cancer removed, and this was a consequence of that. Everything went along very well. But when I said it was my wife beating up on me, someone immediately responded with, he probably deserved it. So, I'm not going to use that line anymore. But it had, slows me down a little bit in terms of county work. The big news, I think, for Tulare County is that yesterday, the Tulare County Association of Governments met and approved issuing bonds, somewhere seventy-five million dollars or so, to raise funds for our capital projects from, as a result of Measure R. Up until now, we've been able to pay as we go, or we have a twenty million dollar line of credit with, with the county pool. But we are now, we just have signed a contract with Overcrossing in Tulare that will require approximately twenty-five million dollars, Measure R dollars, you know, fairly soon. And we have other large projects looming as well. So, as a consequence, the, the time has come for us to go out and do some bonding, and the, the market is good. We're hopeful we'll be looking at rates somewhere around four, four and a half percent. But that will be determined at the time of the sale, which hopefully will occur within about the next two weeks. So, that's, that's the big news for Tulare County and our, our road projects. It will advance our regional projects along that much more quickly. Having funding, of course, is one of the critical components to completion of any project. Last Tuesday, Phil Cox and myself and some staff folks, Mary, CEO's office, and, and other staff members, did some touring of the warehouse and out by the, the building we'll be destroying, that need to be destroyed out by the airport for our, our future project out there. And, and it was a good, good opportunity to take a look at how our, our facilities are functioning out there. I was impressed with the warehouse. I'd been out there a number of years ago. It was not being used. A lot of it was just sort of vacant, haphazard use at best. It's well organized. The different departments have, are making good use of the warehouse. And so, I was encouraged by what, what I saw out there. And so, we're making good use of those facilities. That's what I have for today.
Vice Vanderpoel.
All right. Well, Supervisor Worthley sort of stole the thunder about Cart Mill. They did sign a contract yesterday for that project, and the actual bid came in at about twenty-two million dollars, which was lower than what was expected. And that's going to be a huge economic boost for the city of Tulare and also for Tulare County once that project gets done. I know it's going to be a real pain getting to that point, as someone who frequently travels on Cart Mill, that's going to be closed in the very near future, once they begin the project. And they should be actually breaking ground and beginning construction this summer. Also, this week, on Thursday, there is going to be a mini summit put on by the California State Association of California Counties in Fresno regarding Central Valley County and state issues. I'm going to be attending that for as long as I can, as I have another commitment in Tulare later that afternoon. And then, also, wanted to make a plug for next Tuesday. Thank you to Supervisor Cox for continuing and the board for agreeing to continue the evening meeting series. We will have our first evening meeting of the year, I'm sorry, second. We had one in Lindsay already, but we will be having that at seven o'clock here in the Board of Supervisors chambers. And look forward to that. And I think it's a great opportunity for the public to come out and see what we're doing.
That's all I have, Supervisor. Great, thank you. I will go through mine rather quickly. I'm told we need to go into closed session soon. Last Thursday, met with United Way and Allison Pierce, had a good meeting with them and discussions and about partnering with them in some of our unincorporated communities. That same day, Quadnoff had their open house in East Visalia, out in Supervisor Rasheedah's district. They took an old warehouse and turned it into a beautiful office building, very nice. We're, we're glad that they were able to move down, back downtown. Glenn Morris with the City of Visalia Chamber of Commerce, as most of you know, has taken a job in another county, and we had an open house for him last Thursday as well. Thursday evening, Alpa had, in Allensworth, had its first Summer Night Lights program. In talking with the, the suite ladies there at the front that were checking people in, she looked up at me and she goes, "We just ran out of tickets." And I said, "Well, you know, tickets for what?" She goes, "Well, they had food tickets." "Well, how many did you have?" She goes, "I had two-hundred and fifty." So, they had over two-hundred and fifty. I think they had two-hundred and eighty people attend the Summer Night Lights event in Alpa last week, I think, which was a huge part of that population. Great turnout. I want to thank all the partners that were there. We had a huge turnout from our Health and Human Services Agency, a great event. They made a lot of good contacts there. We're up to fifteen hundred people, about fifteen hundred people, attending the Summer Night Lights events. I need to challenge Supervisor Worthley over here. Dinuba is falling back. They only had, I think, four-hundred people at their first Summer Night Lights event. And Visalia had a hundred and twenty, so you beat us again. Yesterday, I spent the, the day in Sacramento attending the CalCOG meetings with Ben Kimball from TCAG. Apologize for missing the TCAG meeting yesterday. Had a, a successful meeting, listening to legislators from up there in, in Sacramento about the transportation funding that should be trickling down to all the counties and cities. Good news is, it looks like the President has said he will fund the Federal Transportation Fund out of general fund dollars, even without the, without an approved budget. So, those dollars will continue to flow, so we shouldn't have any delays there. So, a very successful meeting in Sacramento, although it was, it was a very long day. Okay, we do have a request to go into closed session. I'd like to take up public comments before we do that, though, because I know some folks have come. In the order I received them, I do have folks wishing to make public comment. Kermit Wolchleger, we'll call you up first. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Kermit Wolchleger, do you need me to spell that?
No.
Thank you. Chairman Cox, Vice Chair Worthley, Board of Supervisors, Health and Human Services Staff, neighbors, citizens, friends at Tulare County. I have been an employee of Tulare County since eighteen, nineteen eighty-nine. I'm also a member of the negotiating team, along with other county employees and SEIU staff. We are representing units one, two, three, four, and seven, which is about thirty-two hundred employees. My heart is saddened with this current state of affairs. I'd like to read a letter that we'll be sending out to our state legislators and other folks. "We are writing to request your help in contacting our Tulare County Board of Supervisors. They are not investing in our community, including thousands of Tulare County workers. Our Board of Supervisors received three raises in twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, totaling almost nine percent. Our county administrative officer received a ten percent raise in twenty-twelve and perhaps another three percent raise last year. Many of our Board of Supervisors and executive management received two-hundred-and-fifty thousand life insurance policies, while the rest of us received ten thousand per year. It seems that when Tulare County begins to build a little bit of a surplus, the additional monies are not distributed to the workforce. Instead, they're shared by the same few, our Board of Supervisors, our CAO, Health and Human Services Administration. We are writing letters asking that our state representatives, state senators, elected state official at all levels step up and advocate for thousands of Tulare County workers. We have no advocates, it appears, on our local Board of Supervisor. Most every person in this county has a family member, church friend, neighbor, who knows and is acquainted with the Tulare County workforce person. And adjacent county, Kings County, has, can now boast job classifications consistently higher than those of Tulare County. While it's likely our Tulare County Board of Supervisors has important responsibilities, I know they do, there's no denying that. However, I feel, and many other workers feel, they are abusing the power and trust of most citizens in Tulare County. For example, ten percent equity annual adjustments for the executive management, when a majority of the workforce receives five percent during their first few years of employment." I'd like to close.
Go ahead.
"We need your help to investigate what we perceive may be a gross mismanagement of taxpayer money. We ask that you support our effort to have the Joint State Legislative Audit Committee approve a state audit. We, the people of Tulare County, Chairman Cox, Vice Chair Worthley, Board of Supervisors, Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency, SEIU, coworkers, citizens, and guests of Tulare County. We are a public agency, we're not a Wall Street firm. Good day."
And next, we have Lena Case. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lena Case. My address is thirteen twenty-two East Narano Boulevard, Wood Lake, California, nine-three-two-eight-six. And I have lived in Tulare County for sixteen and a half years. I have worked for Tulare County for thirteen and a half years as a custodian. I have worked around Tulare County workers, and I have seen the morale of the employees pretty high when I began working in the January of two thousand and one. Employees were proud to be a part of the Tulare County workforce. A job with the county meant security, benefits, and a long-term career. Then, the recession hit in two thousand and eight. Layoffs, furloughs, and all the other compensations were taken away. Most of us rode out the storm. We had morale down and workloads increased tremendously. Everyone sacrificed. We all stuck together as a family. Fast forward to two thousand and fourteen, we are slowly coming out of the hard times. A select few are coming out a lot faster than the majority of the employees of Tulare County. When you are making important decisions to spend money on computers, chairs, new furniture, and vehicles, please remember there are a high percentage of Tulare County employees, sorry, who have not seen their paycheck go up in six, in six years and counting. Please make the effort to compensate the employees that are keeping their county moving by their hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Next, Courtney Hawkins.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors, my name is Courtney Hawkins, a union representative for, with SEIU, representative for the thirty-two hundred employees mentioned by Kermit earlier. I don't want to take up a whole lot of your time, but I want to talk to you as men about being on the right side of right. Since I've come here, working for SEIU, I myself was a member at one point. I've talked to many of the employees throughout the county, and a lot of the stories are still the same. A lot of them talk about how they struggle from day to day since the recession. A lot of them talk about how the board has given themselves raises, but yet to even invest even a little bit into the workforce that keeps this county running, which is a detriment to not only the employees themselves, but the citizens who rely on the services that those employees provide. They've suffered through merit freeze increases, no COLAs. They watched yourself, they watched yourselves give yourself three raises and not once offered the employees who are holding this county up, anything. I would say that's not the right side of right. And respectfully, I'd say, Board, you're on the wrong side of wrong. You took from the employees in the name of, you know, financial hardships during the recession. And now, that we're all beginning to crawl our way out of this hole that we've been in, I think the employees deserve, who, you made it through the recession off their backs, deserve to be able to grow along with the Board of Supervisors. So, I ask you, as gentlemen, as, as men who, I don't know personally, but looking at fact, if you're going to be on the right side of right, that it's time to consider the people that keep this county running. They have families just like you do, and their families are no less important than yours. Thank you.
Sir, I have questions. Are you on the negotiating team?
No, I am not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Linda Castillo. Morning, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Linda Castillo, eleven twenty-four Blue Oak Street in Tulare. Chairman Cox, Vice Chair Worthley, Board of Supervisors, Tulare HNS and SEIU workers, coworkers, citizens, and guests of Tulare County. I've been an employee since two thousand and one, also a member of the negotiating team, along with other county employees and SEIU staff. When is enough enough? When the Board of Supervisors and CAO allow purchases of up to two-hundred-and-eighty thousand in office chairs but denies a majority of its workforce raises for the seventh year in a row? When is enough enough? When the Board of Supervisors receives almost nine percent in raises in one year alone but denies a majority of its workforce raises for the seventh year in a row? When the Board of Supervisors grants the CAO a ten percent in raises in two thousand and twelve and three percent raise in two thousand and thirteen but denies a majority of workforce raises for the seventh year in a row? When the Board of Supervisors and CAO changes the rules for its executives, allowing them to be granted up to ten percent in raises per year, with the majority of the employees are allowed only five percent in step raises when they first begin working for the county? When the CAO requests the Board of Supervisors hires assistant CAO at about a hundred-and-forty thousand per year but denies a majority of its workforce raises for the seventh year in a row? When the CAO and the Board of Supervisors grants raises in two thousand and thirteen to themselves, county elected officials, confidential clerical workers, professionals mid-management, and executive management, department heads, probation, and majority of its workforce raises for the seventh year in a row? When Tulare County HHSA provides an employee incentive survey but does not include an incentive such as an equity adjustment but continues to deny, deny a majority of its workforce raises for the seventh year in a row? When is enough enough? Consider investing in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the requests I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board during public comment period? There is, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Chairman Cox, members of the board. My name is Derek Williams, and my mailing address is P.O. Box five through nine Orosee, California, nine-three-six-four-seven. I have the pleasure of serving on the Citizens Advisory Committee at the pleasure of this board for the Air District. And I just very quickly wanted to make public some information. Their California Air Resources Board is going to be having a course number five-two-five. It's a compliance overview course regarding the truck and bus regulations, the off-road regulations, and portable equipment. It's on July ninth, from eight to twelve, at the San Joaquin Valley Air Protection and Control District Headquarters. Pretty important, I think, for a lot of our industry here. I also serve as a chairman of the Environmental Justice Advisory Group for the Air District. And in that capacity, I've been fighting to bring funds into our area from the state and also to help our environmental justice, primarily owned, small fleets and single-liner operators, be able to get incentive and grants money to help to be able to come into compliance, excuse me, with state regulations. We were successful in that capacity in getting the ARB to modify some of their rules and give us more time to get these trucks into compliance, because the small fleets have been left, between, between fifty and twenty thousand rigs have been left out of the incentive funding. We've got them into the funding now, I'm happy to say. I've been less successful in getting I've been less successful in getting my hands on cap and trade funds, although we are -- we did send a letter through the district requesting cap and trade funds for those incentives, undersetting it'll take something in the neighborhood of seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars to bring all those just small fleet trucks into compliance. But my main reason right now for being up here is to get on the record, this class that is being offered by Air Resources Board is a very important class, and so I just want to get the word out that anybody that has trucking connections, let them know to be at this. It's real important that they know what the changes are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment period? Sir, if you'd please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Brogel Ortiz. I'm thirteen seventy Washington Avenue, Portview, nine three two five seven. You know, guys, that I came already three times that I talked about the rent that I had, that you guys went up in the volume a lot, and you guys promised to me to see in the market. You guys don't do nothing. Now I got a letter that the rent had to be in action because you guys don't do that job. Now, we call to Brown Office. Brown Office suggests that we go to the grand jury. That you know that grand jury, every July, is changing. Now, it's supposed to send to us a paper to go public that you guys don't do that job that you're supposed to be doing. That's why you pay. And you, Annis, Mike, you, Phoebes District, you have to hear what we say. We put you in there. The only way you do is sit down there four times a day today. You're supposed to improve. You're supposed to be to me, promise. Let me go jumping too much because I don't have no time. I know Mr. Brown. I talked to Mr. Brown. I checked his hands in the seventies. And I'm willing to go all the way. You guys, you guys don't listen. You guys challenge me. When people challenge me, I get mad. Because I'm not a politician. But now, Virginia, the one that's running with you, he went to my house. Now I make Martinez to join Virginia, to pitch you in the election, because I spanked her to be here to take care of you guys, because I think there's something wrong here. It's not personal.
Excuse me.
I'm pretty sure there's corrupts in here.
Hold on a second. Can you pause the clock, Michelle? Madam Counsel, do -- I need to let this continue.
Are you talking about the nature of the political remarks?
Yes.
Political contests are not within your Board's jurisdiction. I would suggest that you ask Mr. Ortiz to redirect his comments to his personal or particular concern.
Okay, Mr. Ortiz, if you could go back to your issue and get off of politics, I would appreciate that.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, anyway, I guess you guys should resign. Now, I got my boy that I put money to be good for United States. He speaks eight languages. This is my other boy that's older that have to read a little fast. There is a doctor. You see here, this gal is a doctor. And I got another one, son, that's coming, a lawyer next year. So you guys estimating me. You didn't listen what I'm saying. And on the politics, I'm not a politician, I don't want to be a politician, but the way that I see that you guys, you don't move. And you're the one that have to be for us, because you're not doing the job that you're supposed to be. The five corrupts. I take all that, I take the responsibility what I said, all of it corrupts. If you want to sue me, you sue me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Anybody else wishing to speak during public comment period? Okay, seen none. We are going to go to closed session. We have an issue we will take up immediately. Madam Counsel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this item is on your Board's agenda as Item G, Conference with Labor Negotiation.
We will be back in how many minutes? Ten, fifteen minutes. Apologize, that took us a little bit longer than we thought. Mr. Innes returns, we'll start the meeting back up. I thought we had one issue, labor, and we talked about several.
Labor issues. Several labor issues.
Okay, we are back in session. Did we have anything to report out, Madam Counsel? Okay, we will now take up our consent calendar. Item number sixteen is pulled and off calendar. Are there any other items that the Board wishes to pull for separate consideration?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to pull. I just want to comment very quickly and might express my thanks to the Resource Management Agency. We've got some items here today. One, the paving for the Traver Elementary Sidewalk Project, the going forward with the bridge in Mike's district, and the Seville Yetto Water Projects moving forward. I just appreciate the work of the RMA Department in moving these projects forward and really to the benefit of Tulare County. That's it. I move for approval.
I'll second that question. Anyone from the public wishing to pull an item for separate consideration? Okay, motion by Worley to approve the consent calendar, less Item sixteen, seconded by Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Consent calendar passes unanimous. We'll now move to our untimed items. Our first untimed item is Item number forty-one.
I'll go to this side today since there's no PowerPoint. Good morning, Chairman Cox, Board members, Mr. Rousseau, Ms. Belzang. I'm Rita Woodard, Tulare County Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Voter Register. And my office is at the courthouse room one oh one E by Say and also down at Government Plaza in the Elections Office. I'm here today to request that you approve the issuance of tax and revenue anticipation notes for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen fiscal year in an amount not to exceed fifty-six billion dollars for a twelve-month period. The purpose of the temporary borrowing is to increase available cash balances, which provide operating funds to cover cash shortfalls. Cash shortfalls arise due to the timing differences of monthly cash receipts and disbursements throughout the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen fiscal year. The borrowing also provides an additional source of revenue because the cost of borrowing is usually less than reinvestment income, producing a net gain to the county of Tulare. Of course, we don't know how much that will be until we sell them and find out what the cost will be and then what we earn on the money. We are to sell them at the maximum rate of five percent interest there. There's max on it, so we can't go too high. So I appreciate your approval of this item.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. I know yesterday when we were looking at TCAC going at the bond, of course, that was for a long-term bond issuance. The market, we gave authority up to six percent. The market, as it is today or yesterday, was somewhere around four to four and a half percent. Do you have a feel for where the current market is for the short term?
Well, our advisors are the same ones as TCAC, so they'd be saying that. But a short term, they're expecting a lot less because we're only gaining one percent on our money, and we're expecting to make money on it, so it's less than the one percent.
Okay. Other questions? Rita, use all at once or as needed? Are you going to do a multi-sell or is it going to be all at once?
All at once.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Okay, seen none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
By Innes, seconded by Ashida, and is unanimous. Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Okay, our last item on today's open session is Item number forty-two, a request from Resource Management Agency to initiate general plan initiation twelve dash zero zero two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. CAO, Counsel, Mike Spata, RMA. The matter before you today is a proposed general plan initiation, specifically GPI twelve dash zero zero two for Darrell's Mini Storage. In terms of the key features of this proposal, the request is to initiate a general plan amendment from agriculture to service commercial or light industrial, as the appropriate case may be. The applicant is Equity BAK LP, sponsored through Paul Ridenhour. The proposal is a planning and development of a nineteen-point-three acre site for a mini-storage facility, and this would be through service commercial. The location is the northwest corner of Avenue Tuahedi or Caldwell Avenue and Roben Road. In terms of the county planning and zoning, it is within the county urban area boundary. The land use designation is agriculture, and the zoning is AE twenty, exclusive agriculture, one lot per twenty acres. This is a rough diagram of the proposed phasing. It's about twenty acres. The first ten acres in Phase One, Phase Two would be open for development, whereas Phase Three, which would be temporary storage, would be within agriculture, and it would not be transformed, according to the proposal, to service commercial until Phase One and Phase Two have been built out. All right, these are, very quickly, some maps. This gives you a regional vicinity view of the subject property here. This is Caldwell. There's a site. Here's the city of Visalia. Okay, this is an aerial photograph. The dark green perimeter here is the subject property. Visalia is up here, and this is county land, and you can see it's vacant to the west, to the south. Terms of the county-city map, the gray shaded area is the Visalia city limits. This is Visalia's urban growth boundary. Here's the subject site. It is not in any urban development boundary or growth boundary of the city of Visalia, however, it is within the sphere of influence of the city. All right, here is a county land use designation map. The green shaded area represents the land use designation of agriculture. This is the zoning map. You can see almost all this property within the site, as well as to the east, to the south, to the west, to the north, is AE twenty. In terms of the airport, the subject property is outside any affected zone of the airport, so there is no impact with regard to any kind of airport issue if the proposal were approved by you for processing. Here is the latest map that we have reflecting the city of Visalia's draft general plan update, and the subject property is within a category known as reserve. All right, in terms of the matter before you, there are two essential determinations that you need to make per county policy. One is their public need for the project, and number two is their potential consistency with the general plan. In terms of public need, and is outlined in detail in your agenda item and attachments, there are six items that we highlighted demonstrating the public need. First and foremost, this project could represent implementation of the general plan update and the sound land use and environmental planning policies that your Board adopted and referred to in the staff report could be implemented through this project. So it's plan implementation. Secondly, through this commercial project, economic development opportunities would be stimulated. Thirdly, as part of project design, both as a phasing plan and as acquisition of agricultural land, this proposal will carry out the ag-land protection and preservation policies of the county. In addition, sustainable public facilities and services will be required. The project will require an environmental impact report, which will demonstrate that it will be a solid analysis that will withstand any scrutiny in our judgment. And finally, we have exercised and will continue to exercise as part of this proposal, if it's approved for processing, as part of the general plan, as part of the memorandum of understanding with the city of Visalia, intergovernmental coordination and cooperation, which we have extensively undertaken and will continue to undertake. And I think as a result of the public comment period, it will be reflected today that the city does not oppose the project. All right, in terms of general plan consistency, there are a number of features that we've highlighted in the report to demonstrate that this proposal does have potential consistency with your general plan. First and foremost, this plan will carry out city coordination and cooperation. Those are explicit policies in your general plan. In addition, this proposal will mitigate significant environmental impacts. Thirdly, and importantly, this is subject to the RVLP. Agricultural protection issues will arise, and this developer has stepped forward to try to address them head-on to ensure that there will be no significant impact associated with loss of ag-land. Terms of standards of approval, the county is willing and prepared to engage in whatever discussions are necessary with the city to ensure that feasible standards of approval, particularly for infrastructure, will be part of this project. Also, airport compatibility has been demonstrated, and we believe will not be a problem for this project if you approve it for processing. And finally, there will be adequate water, sewer, roads, et cetera, stormwater control for this project if it goes forward. All right, in a nutshell, the recommendation is as follows. Number one, approve the general plan initiation number twelve dash oh oh two to proceed as a general plan amendment for Darrell's Mini Storage. And secondly, to require that project processing include, but not be limited to, an EIR, a GPA, a zoning amendment, phasing plan, public facilities financing plan, and development agreement. That concludes our presentation, sir.
Any questions of staff on the Board?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to make a comment. Mike hasn't made it, but I'm sure he would have asked to, that initiation of a general plan amendment does not guarantee that the project is approved by this Board. That is, this is beginning a process that would ultimately determine whether or not there would be approval of the general plan amendment, which would have authorized this type of development. So I think it's important to make that distinction made at this point.
That's correct. Thank you.
Any one from the public like to make a comment? If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Darlene Motta here, representing the project applicant, address P.O. Box seven, P.O. Box seven-three-five-four in Visalia. Chairman Cox and members of the Board, I will first off want to thank you and your staff. I know the county has gone through some great efforts in recent years to improve the application processing at the RMA, and I have to tell you that there have been significant improvements, and I know you appreciate hearing that from somebody who's actually in the process. We have reviewed the staff report. We are aware that this is just a general plan initiation, and it's the first step in the evaluation and analysis, and we concur with the information that was provided to you in that staff report. Would like to just say that we have had an application in at the city of Visalia in nineteen-ninety-nine, and at that point, Mr. Ridenhour had identified that there was a need for mini-storage in the southwest part of Visalia, and as far back as nineteen-ninety-nine, and as we know, there's been significant growth in that area since that time, and hence there's still an unmet need in the southwest part of Visalia and in that area in the county. We have also met with the neighbors. There is a rural residential neighborhood to the east of the proposed project. We have met with them twice to get their feedback and see whether or not this would be something that would be opposed by the neighborhood or supported by the neighborhood. We did make some changes to what we had shown on that diagram as a result of that meeting. We did get feedback from them that they weren't interested in coming into the city of Visalia, which is what would be required for this project to actually happen and annexed into the city of Visalia. And with that, I have Mr. Ridenhour here with me today, representing Darrell's Mini Storage, if you have any questions regarding the operations or his proposal. We also have members here from the Visalia First Assembly Church. We are working with the church on some other property south of Caldwell in hopes that we can work something out with them if this project is eventually approved, and they are here in support of our application. And with that, if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them or defer any operational questions to Mr. Ridenhour.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the Board on this issue? Anyone else wishing to address the board on this issue?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Josh McDonald. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director for the city of Visalia. First wanted to thank Michael and his staff. What Michael stated about intergovernmental coordination and cooperation is absolutely happening in accordance with the MOU that your board and my city council signed. We are absolutely working together, and we're working well, so I'm very pleased to report that. With this particular project, at this time, the city is not opposed to the county initiating the GPI, and we look forward to working with your staff as the project moves forward through the SEQA process. Of course, the city will have comments, and at the appropriate time, we will make those. But at this time, we certainly look forward to moving this project forward.
Great, thank you, Ms. McDonald. Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? Seen none, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Mr. Chair, just a, just a. I take that back.
I'm Pastor Ernest Compey from Visalia First, and I just wanted to thank you gentlemen for this hearing today and to tell you that we stand in favor of the project that's being presented to you at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Gary Brookshire. I live at 1704 South Shirke Road, which is fairly close to this project. I'm always impressed with how Darrell's Mini Storage do their landscaping, make things look really neat, and I'm in full support of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Going, going, gone. Yes, sir.
I was just going to make a comment. It's great to hear the comments from the city of Visalia about intergovernmental coordination. I think that's really what this board wanted to see through the general plan MOU process, and glad to see it in action and that we're consulting with our neighboring governmental entities as these projects and instances happen going forward. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of this project.
Okay.
Or this initiation, the initiation, I'm sorry, the process. I meant to say process. I knew it started with P-R-O, but I kind of.
Motion by Vanderpoel. Second by Worley. Please cast your votes, and is unanimous. Thank you. We thank you for attending our meeting today. We have further items for closed session. Madam Counsel?
Items A through G on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any news.
Thank you. Adjourn to closed session.
I didn't mean to say process earlier. I want to. Process.